All right, we'll call the regular meeting of the Hamel Council, please. October 16th, 2024. That's 6:30 P. M. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Aye, Councilor Heisler moved to approve the agenda with the following amendment. Move Item 5, Public Input Inquiries, to follow Item 6, Presentations, Petitions, and Delegations.
Have a second, or?
Aye, Councilor Kennedy, second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, Council. I need a motion to adopt the consent section.
My Councilor De Cleveaux moved to adopt the consent section with the removal of the Upper Kings Clear Fire Department Report and move to Business arising 7C.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Any disclosures tonight, Council? Okay, so we'll go into Presentations, Petitions, or Delegations. We have some tonight from the CRFC.
Thank you, Mayor Morrison. I'm here tonight to make a presentation with respect to a proposed rezoning. And I think Sheri is putting the presentation up on the screen. Your slide or two ahead, I think Sheri.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to figure out why it's not going big for me. And I can't see, it's kind of awkward. Sheri, I thought that eject button on the top, I think if you press, do you see that little like TV looking thing up on the very top? I think that's present.
So, the proposed rezoning is for Bylaw number 34-2024. The property is at 1874 Route 640 Hamel, PID number 75193813. The proposed amendment is an application to rezone the property from the residential car zone to the commercial industrial CLI zone to operate the selling and buying of used cars with occasionally offering tire changing services. The proposed amendment only allows this use, it doesn't allow all the uses in the CLI zone. If we go to the next picture, you will see outlined in red, that is the property that we're talking about being rezoned. If you were to go to the next slide, you will see that it is across the road from Ace Automotive and Jardine Auctioneering, if that can give you a bit of a relationship as to where it is. You will see pictures if we start in the top left-hand corner. As the rear of the house, directly below it is an aerial showing some of the area that they have cleared to great part in a lot at the rear. The one in the middle shows some of the existing outbuildings. And the one on the right is an aerial showing the property from the Hamel Road. This slide shows their proposed parking plan. So in the dark, you'll see where the existing driveway is. And in the light gray, you will see the area that they're proposing to pave with parking spots to the rear of the property. Part of the rezoning process is our planners must consult a number of government department and branches for their comments. So the first few are from the Department of Environmental Local Government. The Authorization Branch had no concerns. The Air Sciences Section had no comments. The Water Sciences Section, basically their only comment would be to ensure that any industrial equipment materials are properly stored to avoid negative runoff onto the surrounding environment throughout development and operation of the buying and selling of used cars. Climate Change Branch had no comments. The Provincial and Community Planning Branch, their comment was that statements of provincial interest shall be considered. Department of National Resources Energy and Development had no comments. Tourism and Heritage had no comments. And the Water Course Alteration and Wetland Branch with Department of Environmental Local Government did a desktop assessment utilizing available aerial energy, provided photos, LiDAR, and hill shade. There is no wetlands present at the given location. That was the comments we received. So if we go on to, you went one too far, Sheri.
I did.
Please, not you. Okay, man's not up there, it's in the presentation. Anyway, to address the statements of public interest, the SP 1 is to promote efficient development and land use patterns that are in the best interests of the province, local government, and residents in the long term. The response is that in the rural plan, mixed land uses are permitted. The development is directed towards existing communities and community and stakeholder collaboration in development decisions. SP number 2 is to promote a range of housing options such as size, type, density, and design. This allows for mixed residential densities in both urban and rural communities to encourage and diversify affordability. And mixed use in mixed income neighborhoods, this can diversify residential population and create inclusive neighborhoods. Statement for provincial interest, point 6 is to promote development in communities without public water and wastewater systems to be located on actively maintained roads. And this property is on Hamel Road or Route 640, which is actively maintained. The slide that we have up now deals with the rural plan. So the proposed rezoning is consistent with the general intent of the plan. So as objectives of the plan is to regulate land use and strategically implement the vision for the future of the rural community of Hamel as an attractive place for current and future residents to live, work, and play. The other objective is to promote orderly development that fosters the local economy while ensuring a healthy balance of land uses and safe and efficient transportation. In the policies, commercial and industrial uses, it's a policy to protect the natural environment and the residential character of the community through the control of type and location of commercial and industrial development. Along with the proposed rezoning, there are a number of terms and conditions. And I think that's the last slide, Sheri. So, term and condition number one, that a maximum of nine vehicles is permitted on the lot at any time. This includes both personal and business vehicles to make up the total of nine. That all vehicles intended for business purposes, whether for purchase or sale, must be stored at the rear of the property behind the garage. That all signage must comply with the specifications outlined in the Hamel signage bylaw, number 10-2015. That the business is permitted to operate seven days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That the business adhered to any applicable federal and provincial government regulations. That there be no onsite disposal of hazardous material. And all hazardous materials be disposed of by offsite by a waste management company. That no air-licked vehicles be stored on the property. And that prior to commencing operations, a new access permit be obtained from the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. That where possible, existing trees and shoves be maintained around the perimeter of the property. That exterior lighting be located, arranged, or shielded as not to interfere with local traffic or with nearby landowners and the reasonable enjoyment of their properties. That the rezoning of lands herein does not mean an approval on the issuing of subsequent permits or approvals, such as that for building or subdivision. And that any additional services beyond those specified in the application require the applicant to contact Hamilton Region Service Commission, Planning and Development officers, to assess the necessity of obtaining any further land use approvals. So that's the presentation on the rezoning. As a part of this process where it's a public hearing tonight, our office received an email late this afternoon. And because it hasn't had time to be circulated to council, I'm required to read that to you folks tonight. So this was sent to one of our planners, Ragham. It says as follows, "Thank you for your guidance with your concerns regarding 1874 Route 640 Plan. Shane and I would like to forward you a list of our concerns and proposed stipulations." One, our first concern is regarding number nine of the proposed terms and conditions laid out by the Hamel Rural Community Bylaw, number 34-2024, Schedule 34-2024K. And they attached a photo, but I can't really show you the photo, it didn't print well. As you can see in the photo attached, not only were all the trees and shoves removed from the rear property, it seems the owners of 1874 Route 640 have encroached to the rear property owned by us, Shane and Lauren Reiner. And I hope I pronounced that correctly. Close enough. Close enough, okay. Now that the trees have been cleared, who will be responsible for the now free standing trees if they were to fall in damage, for example, a car or another property? This brings a few concerns. If the owners of 1874 Route 640 cannot follow a Hamel Rural Community bylaw, as simple as not removing all trees and shoves before they even receive a plan approval, will they abide by the bylaws in place once they do receive approval? Now that all trees are removed along the property line, what privacy is there once nine vehicles have parked along the property line and potential customers are walking around the vehicle? Two, we, Shane and Lauren Reiner, would like to propose a full height privacy fence be installed at the expense of the owners of 1874 Route 640 before business operations and sales begin. This would ensure privacy of surrounding residential homes, potentially helping with any noise, especially during a potential busy weekend, the example they paved is on Sundays. It is to our knowledge that the new zoning, that with the new zoning, tire changes are permitted, though car repair and detailing is not. Do we have in writing the number of new or used tires that can be stored on the property? Number four, relates to Section 7 of the Terms and Conditions, no air-licked vehicle. They already brought in damaged vehicles, and he had a photo of one that was towed in. Brings us back to this being a repair operation. Number five, another concern we have is the new zoning can be easily announced to include what is written in the Hamel Rural Plan C highlighted. In the commercial light industrial zone, any land building structure may be used for no other purpose than A, one or more of the following main uses. One, an automotive sales or rental establishment. Two, which they've highlighted, an automotive repair shop. Three, which they've highlighted, a service or repair shop. Four, self-service storage facility. Five, a restroom and beverage room. Six, a convenience store. Seven, a retail store. Eight, an auction center. Nine, a business office. Ten, a personal service management. Eleven, a service station. And twelve, heavy equipment sales and service. Thirteen, a medical or dental clinic. Fourteen, a transportation terminal, subject to terms and conditions. Fifteen, a warehouse, subject to terms and conditions. Sixteen, a manufacturing operation, subject to terms and conditions. B, one or more of the following secondary uses, an attached or single-family dwelling, a multi-family dwelling, and accessory building structure use incidental to the main use of the land building or structure if such main use is permitted by this section. It is not our intention to stop small business from entering Hamel community, however, we do feel that Hamel community and Rural Command, Community, Rural Plan Committee has worked hard to create a rural plan and bylaws to ensure our community continues to be inspired by nature and the growth of businesses done in a way that is good for all our residents. Thank you for every amount of council's consideration. That is the end of the letters that we received at our office with respect to this.
Thank you, Lonnie. Our staff, did we receive any other letters, either for or against the zoning? Okay, is Mr. Cathbell in attendance? Would you guys like to speak?
As she was concerned about the fencing, we already have a quotation for the fencing, and we are going to follow all the bylaws and everything, and we don't want to make any troubles to our neighbors or anyone. So we want to cooperate, everyone. Whatever the rules are here, we will follow that. And for the fence, we make sure, once we get the permission, we will make the fence over there.
Okay, any other comments? No? Anybody else have anything to say, either for or against the zoning? Are you for or against?
Not sure.
Okay, we'll let him. Could you state your name for the record so we can...
My name is Peter Michel. The issue of number nine whereby it was raised by one of the neighbors, it's already a parking lot. They removed all the grass and removed the trees and made it as a parking lot. If this permit is permitted, or the zone, the rezon is permitted, the intention would be is to use that parking lot, which is not according to the zoning that's requested. Second thing that has not been mentioned is that there's a three-bay garage set up in the back. Is that three-bay garage going to be used as a garage? Because according to the zoning, if you received the zoning, number two would be an automobile repair shop. So by allowing the car sales, he's allowing everything else in there. So other than tire changes, we're talking another garage.
I'm going to refer that question to Lonnie, he's the expert on that particular question.
With respect to all the uses that are permitted in the commercial light industrial zone, they are only being given the use as auto sales and occasional tire changes. All the other uses that I listed in the letter that I read into the record, none of those uses are permitted. The way the bylaw is worded is they only specifically get this car sale and occasional tire changes, they do not get all of the other uses. If they want any of those other uses, then they require another application to go through the rezoning, they don't get all those uses.
Correct me if I'm mistaken, commercial light industrial zone guarantees that you can get any of these?
No, not through the rezoning, through the rezoning that they apply to go through. The proposed amendment on the front page says, "Is to rezone the property from residential car zone to commercial light industrial zone to operate selling and buying of used cars with occasionally offering a tire changing service." That is all the uses in the commercial light industrial zone that they get to do. They do not get to do any or all of those other listed uses. If they were rezoned to commercial light industrial with no terms and conditions, then you would be correct. They could do all the uses that are listed, but that is not what they have asked for, it is not what our office has recommended. They are to get to operate, selling, and buying of used cars, and occasionally offering a tire change service. That is all that they get.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, anybody else wish to speak?
Ask a question?
Yeah, could you state your name for the writer, please?
Joget Michel, this is my husband. Thanks Lonnie for that, I guess my question, two questions. When I read this originally, when I got the, our property is in my name, so I got the notification, and I didn't see anything in here about tire change. Is that something that was added afterwards? And I guess my question would be, how do you define occasional?
And that is something that was brought up by the people that submitted the letter. So up until the point of third reading, council has the ability to add, subtract, or change the terms and conditions listed. So if after a public hearing, which is what's happening tonight, if they want to add or change terms and conditions, they have the ability to do that up till the third reading.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is with respect to number 12, any additional services beyond those specified in the application require blah, 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 further applications? So following up on my husband's question, if this was a straight residential to CLI, any of these would be permitted? This is not, that's not what this is.
That's not what this is.
This is restricted. However, if they get the CLI zoning, does this number 12 mean that at some point they can come back and say, well, we have CLI, now we'd like to move to add automobile repair?
What 12 means, or what that their term and condition means, that if they want anything additional, they want to build a building, they want to change terms and conditions, they want to do something that requires a rezoning, it is part of this rezoning that they're required to come back to our office and apply for whatever use or additional term or permission or approval that they might want.
Okay, and my final question, and Lonnie will know I am asking this, in terms of oversight and management, you know, who, is that Brian that does that, working out of your office? How often is it done? Who makes sure that there's compliance or deals with it if there's...
Brian is our compliance officer, and he is pretty diligent with respect to his job. I think you're aware of that.
Yes.
So, the service that one person gets, everybody gets.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Cathbell, did you have any, or Mrs. Cathbell, do you have anything else to add?
None.
Now, Council, do you have any questions? Comes from Kennedy.
As a follow-up to the CLI question asked earlier, would they be able to apply for a variance for it to avoid the rezoning, since it's already zoned as CLI? Would a variance allow them to bypass the process of a new rezoning to add additional terms?
A variance generally refers to dimensions, area numbers. It doesn't really refer to a way around a rezoning or term of ambition. So it is, it's a variance. And with respect to the number of vehicles, that is set by the rezoning, that's not set by Prac or the rural plan, that's by the rezoning, and the rezoning sets the number of vehicles.
Okay, thank you for the amount of... Council, any other questions for the applicant or for Mr. Forbes? We're good? Okay, so I'll get a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Move to adjourn the public hearing?
Yeah, can I have a second, or please?
I'll second.
Okay, public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you, folks, for your attendance. You can stay for the remainder of the proceedings if you so desire. If not, you can, the evening is still young.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming. Okay, moving on to Item B, CRFC Presentation Land for Public Purposes, Anderson's Application Phase 24-1.
It seems like I'm monopolizing your meeting time.
That's quite all right, we appreciate you being here.
Okay, so tonight we have two applications for land for public purposes. I'll speak with respect to the Anderson one. So this is a decision on land for public purposes for five lots to be created from PID number 75563676 on a right-of-way known as Jones-Cesse Drive. We get the authority from this, from the Hamel subdivision bylaw. By way of a bit of background, on June 16th, 2023, council received a staff report for the creation of four lots with a recommendation to the Hamel community, rural community. A motion was made and carried for the Hamel rural community to request an amount for each proposed lot shown in the staff report, Attachment B. A year later, on June 11th, a new staff report was provided to council regarding land for public purposes, as the property had accepted an offer for one lot instead of the four lots identified in June of 2023. Motion was made and carried by Hamel Council to request zero dollars for this. What happened between these two was the original land had markings on it from G U N B showing a fairly large portion of that land covered by wetland. The owner at that time decided not to proceed with subdivision and sell it as one lot. When she decided to sell it as one lot, Hamel Council requested zero dollars. The new owner hired Boreal Environmental to conduct a wetland delineation. The delineation concluded that the two wetlands presented on the ground do not require to be regulated under the water course and wetland operation. So essentially, it means they don't exist. If they don't exist, then the new owner was in a situation, well, now I can come back and look at subdividing. So on September 11th, Prac approved a new plan for the creation of five lots on a 20-meter wide right-of-way for the development of land as shown on the Shawn Anderson subdivision, subject to the final plan of subdivision being stamped with private right-of-way note and an arrangement made for public purposes, land for public purposes, with the rural community of Hamel. So originally, there was land for public purposes or money up to 8%. It went to zero, and now we're back with lots, so we're required to come back to council. So on Table 1, we looked at lots that were sold in the area, and basically, what were they sold for, what were they worth? And we come up with a price per square meter of $3.63. Based on the square meters of each of the five lots, and an 8% of that value, you will see in Table 2, the different amounts for each lot based on the size of them. Lot 5 being the largest amount obviously has the largest amount of money. So what are your options? You can take the land, up to 8% of the proposed subdivision. So the total area is 5,200 square meters, 8% of that is 4,200 square meters. The land could be dedicated to the rural community of Hamel. You can take the sum of money up to 8% of the value of the property. as per similar sales on SMB. That's shown in table two above. You can do a combination, part land, part cash. Or if you desire, you do not have to take any land or money for public purposes. Staff at Capital Region Service Commission is recommending that Hamel community request an amount per each lot proposed as shown on table two above to be paid for land for public purposes.
Thank you, Lonnie. That's your presentation. Appreciate that one.
Yep.
So I'm going to move into the discussion phase. I'm going to go around the table and ask each counselor where their preferences are, whether they want to take land, 8% of the land, or 8% of the value of the land.
Should we have a motion first?
Should we have a motion first?
Because it might, nobody can make a motion.
Well, we might, yeah. We've got to know what we're doing before we make a motion. We can't make a motion to either take land or bill or money until we decide what we want to do.
Somebody would make a motion, and then it would move forward.
We have to have a discussion before we make a motion.
Then we should motion to suspend the rules. We're going to do that.
Okay. We can do that. Okay. Can I have a motion to suspend the rules?
I move, I, Councilor Hyslop, to suspend the rules.
I, Councilor McKenzie, second.
Okay. So the rules are now suspended?
We got a vote on that.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary, mind. Okay. Motion carried. So the rules are now suspended. So I'm going to start with Counselor Riglau, whether he's in favor of either 8% of the area or 8% of the value.
Or nothing.
Or, or, or nothing.
I hate to interrupt, but could we have some more information on this? Your Shawn?
Yeah.
I'll say go ahead. I've had some questions from the landowner, and I just wanted, he had some information. I just wondered if maybe we'd like to let him speak a bit first? Or I could present some of the, he has contacted me about some questions that we have for Lonnie on this one as to?
Well, where the rules are suspended.
Can we do that before we decide what we're going to do?
Well, if there's more information that you need, and counsel, I'm sure counsel would appreciate more information.
It's fine, yeah.
So if it's counsel's desire, I'll let the owner speak to us and give us the information that we need, and we can ask them questions if that's okay with the owner.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Thank you. My first question is that the, there's a bigger lot, the lot number five, which I'm going to retain. And the four smaller lots, I plan to develop, develop four houses over the next 24 months. So that 8% tax on the bigger lot that I'm retaining, I don't see, I would, I don't see why I'm being taxed on that because I'm not developing that one. I'm developing the four that I'm selling. And secondly, the evaluation at the $3.63 square meter, there's other lots on that road that sold within the last 24 months, and the assessment on those ones were quite a bit lower per square meter, down to $1.19. So those are the two issues that I would like to just talk about or reevaluate. I'm not sure how it affects everyone's decisions here on how things are processed. Like, it's all new to me.
Yeah. Well, certainly good information.
Yeah.
I believe you, you're talking about maintaining one of the lots, your big lot for yourself.
There's one big L piece shape that I've kept for myself for future, for family purposes. I'm not sure.
It's still part of the subdivision, am I correct?
Yes, it is. But it's kind of a remnant where I'm developing the small, the four small ones. I'm not sure why I would be taxed on the one that I'm keeping.
And it's not a tax, it's a fee, but that's irrelevant.
It's a fee, yeah, sure, yeah.
The other portion, you were, you were talking assessment. Are you talking value, like what's sold, or are you talking assessment?
Yeah. Well, Lonnie, you had mentioned it's $3.63 a square meter. So there's two other lots that sold that were bigger properties that sold for more money on the same road. Their valuation would decrease that $3.63 down to maybe $2.42 a square meter.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is turn it over to our resident expert, Mr. Forbes, so he can explain this.
You know, I want to get a fair valuation, that's all. I'm not going to break whatever. I just think, I don't know how your three that you kept for the assessment. They're all on the same road.
Yeah.
But there are two other lots that sold there in the last 24 months.
So basically, we try to get less representative of the area, and we found three that sold. There could have been 103 that sold. We didn't look at 103. We looked at three, and of the three that we came up with, that was the number. If it's an easy calculation and if something council wants, if you can provide the PIDs of the other two, then we're certainly willing to go back and look at what the valuation would be per square meter and provide that to council. It's just that when we looked at it, we looked for three to give us an average, and that's what we got.
Yeah. That's typical, right?
Yes.
Yeah. It's a fair assessment. I just, you know.
So if there are some that are less, and it's council's wishes to include them in the calculation, we can do that. I can't do it on the fly, I'm sitting here tonight.
No.
You know, I don't have any issue going back and recalculating it once we get the PIDs for them and providing a different number.
And what about his other question with regards to the five lots, where he's keeping one? But he's, it's part of the development, I understand, it's part of the subdivision from what the information I looked at.
So we have five lots. The original one that came forward was for five lot, mine was for four lots. She didn't move forward with that. They came forward with one. Council said, no, we're not going to charge anything for that one lot. Now we're at a situation where the subdivision is for five lots. So based on your bylaw, we provide you information for those five lots.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for the owner?
No, that's fair.
Okay. But does counsel have any questions for you? Well, you're here.
Yeah, sure. Sure. Yeah, you bet. Fire away.
Anybody have any questions for the owner of the property? Does everybody understands where he's coming and going from?
No. My question's for Lonnie, not for Shawn.
Okay. Well, we'll get to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for the information. Appreciate it. All right. Let's go back, and we might have to do something a little differently. As far as a motion goes, we might have to wait for possible recalculation from the Regional Service Commission.
Maybe.
Maybe. But we'll, we'll decide that. I'll give everybody an opportunity to speak and whether, what they would like to do, either 8% of the, of the land or 8% of the value of the land.
Can I ask Lonnie a question first?
Let's, let's get you on, on the way around, okay? Okay. Great. Thank you. So I'll start with Counselor Riglau.
Right. So I've not been through this many times, so I've learned from the last, we discussed the same property not that long ago, when it was one lot.
Yeah.
Now we're talking about five lots. So to me, that clearly is a subdivision. It's five lots. And based on what you're saying, where it is five lots, even though one is a remnant lot that the owner is going to build on, that is considered a five lot subdivision. So I, I do have some concerns about what the owner is bringing up about the value that was determined. If, if there's reason to go back, I would be, I think, in agreement with another look at the valuation. But having said all that, I am in agreement with the, the cash value, 8% proceeding with that. And, but with consideration to possibly looking at a review of the evaluation.
Right. So our motion will say 8% of the value, and we'll just re-convert the value with Mr. Forbes.
Right.
But we won't have to even go there because it's going to be 8% of the value,
Right.
depending on what value we come up with.
Right.
Okay. Counselor Crabs?
I'm actually in agreeance with Counselor Riglau. I'd like to see the numbers, like reevaluated numbers.
But you're in favor of the 8% for, of the va, of the value for cash?
Maybe not 8%, but I'd like to see the reevaluation like he's requesting on the numbers. I'm thinking more like four. I mean, we've got to start somewhere with something, so. And we can use that funds for something else out in that area.
Right. Well, yeah, standard, you know, with other municipalities including ours, is the 8%. But anyway, if that's what we're going to be voting for one way or the other, I suspect. So I'll move on to Counselor McKenzie.
Well, we didn't get there yet. Thankfully, I'm only third in the list this time, so. I'm not a terribly good salesman, but I'm going to swing a different pitch at this than has been previously presented now. So if you realize, recall, historically, I've always been on the side of not doing any kind of charge to or fee for the owner's subdivisions, and have always been in the proposal of either zero or $1 for it. However, when we have, that position has changed, and the reason has changed. After going through the net zero evaluation project, which we're making good progress in, one of the big things that stumbling blocks that we came up with, and I had quite a discussion with Emmy Power while they were here, is that we don't have any land to build anything on. And not even a lot of land would be needed in some cases. If you go back to the embedded solar array that we wanted to build, we didn't have any land. That project basically died because we had nowhere to put it, even though we had a government grant that was willing to pay a substantial amount of it. That's a big problem to me. And I think that rather than a small fee of even 15% or $15,000 right now, if we're asking for even less than that, I think that that's almost immaterial. However, a land size of 4,217.04 square meters is substantial for us if we have something that comes up in the, in the future, that we want to do something, not necessarily that would end up a park or something like that. But if we're looking to do, for example, what Emmy Power said, you know, if you guys started it up again, even though the Lores project is dead, we would be willing to approve that for an embedded array for you. We don't have any land. Can't do it. And we would need much less than 4,000 meters technically, but it would be nice to have it. So I'm, I would like to see a proposal done. In fact, if I get to make the motion first, it gets dependent on where it goes. I don't think we need a cost evaluation of the value of the land. I would like to see the actual land. 8% of that would be something that we could use in the future. We need, we know we desperately need land. We know it's been discussed strategically for the future for what we need to do. And now we've always, already seen it come up also in the net zero project. We need land. Doesn't have to be tons of land, but we need land. And there are projects that will come up, like the embedded array, that we need space for, and we just don't have it right now. And because of that, I am going to like to see, I would like to see us ignore the fee for it and take the 8% of the land that we could use in the future for projects.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor McKenzie. We could always put that motion, you can make the motion first and approve, then it'd be the land.
Well, let's see, we're, it's season to go around the table and see.
See where we end up.
See what nobody else says.
Okay. Counselor Declan?
I have a really hard time. It's because I just, I, I don't know which one is preferable. I remember the discussion initially, and I remember what you were saying about the, the whole point of it was at some point to be able to have parks in places around the community. I do like the idea of the land. I don't honestly even know how much 4,000 square meters is, so.
It's a million acres.
Is it an acre? Okay. I was like, I still unfortunately am not an acre. Yeah. So I guess if I were to choose, I would choose the land because I don't.
Okay. Counselor Holden, you got a question for Mr. Forbes?
Yes. The land pricing. This gentleman mentioned there were two or three that sold, or two that sold within the two years at a particular value.
Yeah.
The, you said you took a look at three properties?
Yeah.
Okay. Were those recent price points less than two years, within that two-year period? Or were they six months, eight months, 10 months? Because we all know what has occurred with land prices, et cetera.
They looked at two years. I think there was a 22, a 23, and a 24.
They were recent land prices for them, within the two years.
Okay. I have no problem going back and reevaluating that particular point. I still like the 8% cash. I understand where, what Counselor McKenzie's coming from, is that land is land. But we're just talking about an acre. And where that specific acre is located on this particular subdivision, okay, has to also be considered because they're going to be stuck in the back where there's no access to it, or is it going to be stuck in the center? Or is it going to be near the road where we can actually utilize that land? To me, just take the 8% and that's where I'm looking at. Reevaluate the price or the value of the property, okay? But I like cash, queen's treasures, whatever you want to call it.
Thank you. Moving on to Counselor Fox.
Okay. So I have a question, too. In terms of, in terms of land, it's interesting because when you first went through the presentation, the first thought I had, too, was how much land is that? Because I was having difficulty with the square meter thing. So round an acre, that tells me that that's reasonable size of piece of land. What piece of land would that be? Like, how is that determined? I guess is my, is my question.
So essentially, don't want to rain on your parade.
No, no. I, I, I don't know.
Counsel's kind of in the driver's seat as to what 4,200 square meters or a little over an acre they want to take. But I want to rain on Counsel's parade, too. You can't just use this for whatever you want. The money that you get goes for recreation, and so does the land. The land isn't used for solar arrays. It isn't used for government grads. It's used for recreation. So not to say that you shouldn't have the land, but bear in mind that you can't just do whatever you want with it.
That's a good point. Yeah. That's right. That actually changes my thought on this. So, so I guess I'm, I guess I'm pretty much exactly where Counselor Riglau is. And I'm looking at the, at the 8% in terms of cash value. But I do think that we need to reevaluate it just to make sure it's fair for the landlord.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Counselor Hyson.
So I'm going to agree with, yes, I think it needs to be reevaluated. I think it needs to be taken back and looked at, given the information that you gave us. I am going to agree with the 8% rather than the land, only because once me, once acre, we're building, we're already going to be building a park out there, which is 10 acres. So I don't really think this is what we're looking at. It has to be basically recreation. So I'm going to go with the 8% as long as we can reevaluate.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Deputy Mayor John.
Oh, yes. Now I'm going to rain on everybody's parade. My first question is for Lonnie. What, what's the definition then of, this was a larger piece of land. It's not a huge piece of land, but it's a larger piece of land that someone owns, regardless of how they got it, when they, how long they've had it, whatever. So what makes this the piece that he wants to keep, which is obviously not a building lot? If you look at the map, you see four building lots, and that he's chosen to, to have surveyed off. So what then makes the one that he wants to keep not a remnant?
You could classify it as a remnant, but the subdivision plan submitted to us, I understand it labels it as a lot.
Could that just not have been a mistake on the, you know, the, I mean, the owner is?
Surveyors don't make mistakes.
No. I'm sure they don't.
I was never asked when, like, in the process of developing that map. I didn't realize that I was away, and I didn't know that that would be an issue, the calling it a lot five.
Yeah.
So if we strike that from the map, does it have to go through the review process again? And?
No, it doesn't. You've got five lots approved, whether we call them four lots and a remnant. But to go back to Susan, I think what Susan is kind of asking but not asking is what is the definition of a subdivision? And basically, that is when you take one piece of ground and divide it up into two or more pieces. It is a subdivision. We're taking one piece of ground, and we're making two, three, 10 pieces out of it. That's, that's subdivision. It doesn't have to look like Fred Hurtkarp's 200-acre lot subdivision. It's considered a subdivision. Anytime you take one piece of ground and divide it into two or more pieces, it is a subdivision.
I agree with that. But just what I've seen in the past is that you often have even larger pieces of land, and people will develop them in stages. And so therefore, they only are required to pay the, the land for public purposes on what they've divided off that they're going to sell. They consider the rest a remnant. they're going to sell. They consider the rest a remnant, and so they're not charged at that time, are they, for?
For the remnant. So my conversation I had with Terry earlier today was with respect to when it has to be paid. And basically, Prac decision was that before we sign and stamp a final subdivision plan to be registered in the registry office, we have to have confirmation from the municipality that there's an agreement for land for public purposes in place. So you folks have suspended the rules tonight, so you can make it so that, you know, if you want to call lot five a remnant and not have it subject to land for public purposes, you have the privilege of doing that. If you want to instruct us to go back and look at a reevaluation of the dollar amount based on the bids that Mr. Anderson will provide, we're happy to do that and provide you a new evaluation. But based on what we had as the subdivision submitted to us, we have to go with what's submitted. We had five lots submitted, and we provided the calculation based on those five lots.
I understand that, but I think in this case, I don't think that's fair to the landowner because, I mean, it's not a lot that he's planning to develop. It could sit there for years and years and years. He has no intention of selling it. So therefore, I have a problem with charging the land for public, you're charging a price for that. My other point I wanted to bring up that nobody's mentioned, because our landlord didn't mention it, I was talking to him in, on the weekend about, about this. And one of the things he said that he wants to do is he wants, he said he wants to build four houses. But he also said you would plan on building modestly priced houses. And, you know, that's one of the goals of this group, is to have some, you know, more moderately priced housing. And we've often talked over the years about, you know, incentives for people to build houses that are not expensive. And I think waiving the fee on this for two reasons. One is because it's still on a private road that he has no, no hope of ever changing, which is the reason that we took a zero percent last time, and the fact that it's not going to change anymore in our plan. That road's never going to be public. He has no option, once again, to ever be, make that a public road. And as I pointed out before, on the other side of the lake where they were able to come off the six forty, put in much more, you know, larger, more expensive land just for, you know, for purposes of making money, they have, we're not subject to land for public purposes. And my point has always been that on these older private roads where you have no option, that I don't think we should be charging. And it's also one of the things we've been wanting to talk about in our land for, in our rural plan, but we've, you know, we were kind of not getting along with that very fast. And my other point is, I think, I mean, not that it has anything to do with Lonnie, but I think it's a discussion we need to have for council, that if we are looking to have for people to, to do, you know, this is, this will give us four, potentially four, you know, moderately priced houses in Hamwell that we don't have now. It's an opportunity that's just kind of come along recently, and I think that we should give it careful consideration. And he's asked, when I, when he first mentioned it, I said, you know, the, Hamwell is interested in having low rent housing. Is there anything you have an incentive that we can do to help you with it? And he said, no, that he wants to build, you know, he's perfectly willing to build these on his home, on his own. And I think the few thousand dollars by waiving the fee would be, you know, a really good gesture on our part to get some much-needed housing that doesn't cost five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Jonah, any other questions from council? Counselor Holden?
Just commenting on Deputy Mayor Jonah's point. I, I agree with her, in the essence. One of the things that we did, that was mentioned at one of the rural planning committee meetings, is for council to ask the developers, what can we do for you to help you further develop? And she brought an excellent point. Okay. What's a few thousand dollars? In the essence of having four residential properties being developed and increasing our tax base by four buildings, four residences.
Counselor Hightower.
So there's a little, okay, I'm going to beat devil's advocate for one thing. So you say you're not going to sell this. You're going to build your home, your forever home, and that's where you're planning on staying?
No, I'm saving, I'm saving that remnant. I have two children. So potentially, they may want to build or something in the future. I don't know what their plans are. They're all over the place.
Okay, so it's not for you. It's for future developments?
Well, I don't know what I want to do. I live on John Chessey as well, so I have, I live right there right now. But I, I'm not sure if I want to stay there. I'm just not really a hundred percent sure of big plans. But my plan is to develop these four houses here in the, in the next twenty-four months.
And potentially leave the other one empty for now, just to bend your plans?
Yeah, for now, I'm not sure what I want to do with it.
That's fair.
I'm just honest, it's, that's two years from now.
Right. No, that's fair. I just wanted to figure out.
It's kind of like money in the bank. There's a lot of timber on that. There has timber value and stuff like that. And I'm self-employed, so I just have to have something, a backup in case something happens to me, and then I have, you know, opportunity to do something to, I need money or whatever. So it's kind of like money.
No, that's fair. And the information that Deputy Mayor Jonah gave us is new. None of us knew anything about make those homes being affordable or anything like that.
Yeah, they're just, they're lost homes. They're like, kind of be fifteen hundred square feet, one and a half stories, three bedrooms, two baths. Just very compact, nice little house.
Okay, so my question then is, is this something that council needs to look at? Do we need memorandum of understandings? Do we need, what do we need to move it forward? In that regard?
Like, as in the affordable housing?
Yes.
So just remember, we've also applied for funding under the affordable housing. So if that is something that you guys wanted to do for developers, it's, we could do it from that as well. It wouldn't have to be kind of like from this. It could be something that we...
I guess my question is more, we don't have any policy in place. We don't have anything set up. So I just want to make sure that what we do will be carried over in the future, so that we're consistent and...
Right. So actually, Lonnie and I spoke about that this afternoon, and we were saying that council really needs to put in bylaw a policy of how we are going to handle these land for public purposes, so that we are consistent. Because we've kind of been flip-flopping the last few times that this has been brought forward to us. So maybe in the coming months, we can work on this policy, and then it's not going to help. Do they, kind of thing? But I definitely think that it is something that we can do.
I just worry that if we set a precedent with this particular one, that's what we have to continue to do. So I just want to make sure we're being fair to, not only to you, but to everyone moving forward.
So my suggestion actually would be that you guys already want Capital Regional Service Commission to look into this. It's not going to hurt to table this until our next council meeting. Would that be any issue on your part, Lonnie? And it doesn't affect the property owner as far as getting the subdivision signed and all of that? So, I mean, we could, once you got, received that, we could always have a special meeting of council if we had to. But there just seems to be a lot of different conversations and opinions and wanting additional information. So maybe it would be best to table it until we receive this information, and then I can call another meeting, and we can decide if that works better for you guys.
Yeah, we've had some more questions. I know Counselor McKenzie had some questions, and so does Counselor Brinkley. You're good? Counselor Brinkley?
I just want to add one thing. I might be the first to invoke the new draft strategic plan. And in the plan, it does say that we have to develop a new land acquisition plan. And part of that, I assume, would be identifying funds for future purchases of lands wherever they might be in the community. So how are we going to do that? We have to generate funds to do that. So that's just something to consider.
But in this case, we're not purchasing his land. He, he wants to, you know, and we don't need to have money from any grants or anything else. You know, he has his land. He wants to develop it. My only suggestion is, is the only incentive that we really have at our disposal to, to offer him that's really worthwhile to him is to defer his land for public purposes on those four lots. And I think we should defer the land on the other because I think it is a remnant, that he has no intention of selling and, you know, keeping it for his own use, as he said earlier. So, I mean, I have no problem with, you know, tabling this until we can have, you know, make a policy on, because, I mean, I don't, I think if anyone else comes along with the same, same suggestion. I think we should be taking advantage of every opportunity that we have to get some reasonably priced housing in Hamwell.
So council, what?
Any other questions?
Just, just a comment on that, if I can.
Yep.
I'm not backing down from my land situation. Even with the update from, from CRSC, because like, an acre is more than enough in a subdivision, like along that road, but a small play structure and so forth, right? So, and that way, it wouldn't cost the owner anything, wouldn't impact the ability for the costs of, of the development of the other four lots. It's just my thought on it.
Big play structure across the road.
Let's speak in order now. Any other questions, comments?
No.
Okay, I'm going to pass my gavel over to the deputy mayor and have a chance and opportunity to speak. So if you're willing to take the gavel, I'm going to pass it.
There you go.
There you go. So as a, as a rural community, we have, you know, we have very little opportunity to raise funds. We have very little opportunity to acquire land. This eight percent, either in valuation or in green space, is pretty well standard in most communities around the province of Brunswick, whether it be the city of Fredericton, Village of Tracy, so on and so forth. So it's an opportunity to have funds put into our community, other than by taxation or fines or other fees. And we don't have a whole lot of fees. So we really can't, in my own opinion, we can't, you know, just pass up an opportunities to have revenue coming into, into Hamwell. Because the more revenue we can receive other ways, the less it's a tax burden on everybody else. So I'm certainly in favor of the, either the eight percent of land or in the eight percent of valuation. And I believe the subdivision's not set up yet for land for green space. So if we look at eight percent of the land for green space or public purposes, that could mess up the subdivision. If there's only one acre lots, you'd have to rejig the subdivision, I suspect, or take it off the remnant land, which you may not want to do. Because I believe one time before, we asked for land and moved cash, and that scuttled the subdivision. And that's only been a couple of years ago. So we have to be careful there because we don't want to scuttle the subdivision. We want to, you know, encourage development, encourage subdivisions. And I had just one more question is, you're a contractor, I believe, by, so what would you consider a modest-priced house to sell on the market today for?
Well, there's a lot of fees that I incur, and it just depends on what my material costs are, and there's quite a bit of fluctuation. But I'm in that probably three fifty range right now.
Is that included well and septic?
Yeah, that's everything. That's a lot, everything, like a fifteen hundred square foot.
So three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then whatever somebody buys this, plus landscaping, whatever else they have to do on top of that?
Depending on what time of year that I sell the house, and like, I usually try to have all done, like, any of the yard work and...
So in your professional opinion, a modest-priced house is around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, more or less?
Well, to buy that house from Ken Homes, like the one I'm building right now, it would be this three hundred thousand dollars, and that's no lot, no well, no septic, no basement,
Yeah. So three fifty in today's market doesn't go far. What's a well and septic cost?
Well, it depends on the depth. I pay anywhere from five thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars for well. Septic system's fifteen thousand to twenty thousand, depending on how much people have to bring in. And there's a lot of development in gravel for the driveways, and so you're looking a hundred and ten thousand dollars there clearing.
So it's not that difficult to get to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
No, not today, yeah. And then I've got to charge HST, so if there's fifty, you know, thirty to fifty thousand dollars there, depending on what the price of the house is, that I've got to, and then I have real estate fees, five percent. So there's a lot of costs incurred there.
Yeah, and you're in the business, obviously, of making a profit. So you have to, I mean, you wouldn't be a business for long if you weren't. So, no, no, like, the price of housing today, as, as we all know, sitting around here, we've seen houses sell and houses being built.
Yeah. You know, to buy a house now, three hundred thousand dollars, you're looking at a little bungalow, maybe, further out of town, just as all new, current, it's got set up pretty nice, so efficient.
Okay. Thank you. So I have no further comments. So Terry, you had something you want to add?
I was just going to say, I calculated, I thought this question might come up. So if you took off lot twenty-four dash five, which is the applicant's remnant, the eight percent figures out to be six thousand five thirty-one twenty-four instead of the fifteen two ninety-two. So I just thought you might want that number in case you didn't make a motion.
Yeah, I think we'd best leave that calculation to Mr. Forbes and his expertise to have a, have a look at. So council, I'll get, can we take my gavel from the deputy mayor, if she so desires? So where do we want to go from here? Do we, is there any other questions that come up from the comments of any counselors or myself that come to mind? Everybody happy with their comments and questions? So my question is, do we want to table this for the next meeting? Or do we want to pass a motion on the eight percent of one way or the other, the eight percent of land or the eight percent of valuation? And Lonnie will get back to us with the actual valuation, whether it changes one way or not, or the other. So what's council's desire at this point in time?
I would like to table it.
Table it?
Should be a motion to postpone that to the next meeting.
Yes, we will. But right now, the rules are still in flux. So I'm just looking to see where we want to go when we put back into our rules back in order. So we can table it. We need a motion to table it. So is that council's desire to table it, or do we want to move on with the motion?
Table.
Table, table. Okay, so we'll put the rules back in force, and then we'll have a motion to table this decision until a future meeting. Fair enough? So I need a motion to unsuspend the rules.
Make a motion to unsuspend the rules?
Secondary?
Second?
At some point of worry, you don't need that.
Okay. So we need a motion to table this decision on a motion on the subdivision until a future meeting. So can I have a motion for that, please?
Hi, Deputy Mayor Jonah. I move to table this decision to a future meeting when we get more information.
Secondary?
I, Counselor Holden.
Questions, comments? All right. All votes of favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carried by a vote of seven to one.
We'll buy land here, place land.
Okay, moving on to item C, Tranquil Valley Estates subdivision. And you're more than happy to stay on for proceedings or?
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Would you want to use PIDs?
Sure.
What do you got?
Here, can you just have that, can you make that up?
Yep.
These two are already on John Chessey. These are on Route six forty. Just, just on the other.
Okay. No problem.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay.
So is the lot five is going to be no longer on? Is that what the consensus was, that lot five is going to be not a lot?
They haven't told me yet.
Okay.
I got to get them some information, then they're going to make a decision.
So the valuation, and then they'll make a decision. Is that the process?
That's correct, yeah.
And then we meet again in a month?
Yeah, we're going to have a, our next scheduled meeting would be the third Wednesday of November, unless we have a special meeting before that time. We'll certainly let you know.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Land for public purpose, Tranquil Valley Estates. Decision on land for public purposes for one lot to be created is eight seven five three six five three seven nine per the Hamwell subdivision bylaw. On September the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the Planning and Rejust Committee of Capital Regional Service Commission approved a new plan for the creation of one lot on a private access for the development of land as shown in Tranquil Valley Estates subdivision twenty-four dash one, subject two, final plan of subdivisions, the private access, the thirty-meter copper, the clean water note, that no further lots be created on a private access, and an arrangement for land for public purposes. So we're here for the land for public purposes. Again, we found two properties... Again, we found two properties of similar thing, uh, in the area of sale. Prices for a square meter averaging eight dollars and four cents. If we go to table number two, and you're looking at eight percent of the value, the lot at fifty-nine, sixty square meters is forty-seven, nine, eight percent of that is thirty-eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Eight percent of the land is four hundred and seventy-six square meters, which is about an eighth of an acre.
No, no.
Wow.
So, again, you basically have four options, eight percent of the area, eight percent and a sum of money, a combination of land or cash, land and cash, or to require no land or no money. The recommendation from staff is that we recommend the rural community of Hamel request an amount per the proposed lot in table two above to be paid for land for public purposes, and that amount is thirty-eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and one cent.
Thank you, Lonnie.
I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Lonnie.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, again, as before, I guess I will go around the table for comments before we go to a vote, to see where we stand on this, so I'm gonna start with Council of Brinklow. Oh, yeah, we need a motion to suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rules, please.
And Councilor Hope, will you suspend the rules?
Secondary?
No second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, the rules are now suspended, and we'll start with, uh, Council of Brinklow.
Well, this is different, this is just a subdivision of one, uh, lot, or I guess subdividing the property into two. Having said that, uh, I'm, I am uncomfortable with the inconsistencies that are coming in here, I look forward to the discussion on, um, a new policy on this. In the absence of that, I agree with the comments of the mayor, that this is not an uncommon fee, uh, other municipalities do it, uh, we do need to develop a plan for land acquisition. I think, uh, we should not give up the opportunity to collect these fees, make it consistent for everybody across the board, regardless of the size of the subdivision or how many lots are subdivided, and, uh, we will need those funds to do, to acquire other lands in the community, so that's my position.
Okay, thank you, Council of Crabs.
Lonnie.
Understood, thank you. Council of McKenzie?
Well, four hundred and seventy-six point eight square meters could still be designated as conservation or something, we could end up, uh, planting more trees on it, putting a little plaque on it, and saying it's dedicated to something, we could have some future thing where we need to dedicate a small plot of land to somebody, who knows, right? Something could come up in the future. Four hundred and seventy-six point eight square meters isn't a much land, it's an acre.
I think that'd be ideal for your bureau spot.
Wouldn't even need that much for me. This job's gonna kill me. All right, that's, that's, uh, that's, that's my, I'm not being inconsistent, from now on it's exactly what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna ask for land.
No, there's nothing wrong with that. Okay, Council of De Cleve?
Um, cash.
Thank you, Councilor Hope?
Cash.
Councilor Fox?
Um, cash, but, um, what makes this different from the previous one in that should there not now be two lots here? Is that big remnant lot, why are we not collecting on that?
It might have to refer to the subdivision plan, I believe.
If you refer to the subdivision plan, the subdivision plan creates one lot, it doesn't create two lots. It does by definition, but second lot is the remnant, when you look at your subdivision bylaw with land for public purposes, it's the lots that were created. He is not your long-term developer, he maybe didn't know, he didn't label lot five as a remnant, he labeled it as a lot. So, based on the rules that we have to play with and interpret, the other one you get five amounts, this one you get one.
Cash.
Council of Hines?
I'm going with the eight percent cash.
And Deputy Mayor Jonah?
Well, you know me, um, I, I do agree with Council of Brinklow that we do need to have a, a consistent, um, policy on this, because our, our policy is not consistent at all, um, because we, you know, we're dealing with private roads and public roads and, and large subdivisions and small subdivisions, and, you know, I don't know the circumstances of this one, why they're dividing it off, um, and I haven't had time to really study it yet, lucky for you, Lonnie, so I can't argue too much on this one, uh, because I really don't know the circumstances of it, and I just happened to find out about the other one, um, over the weekend, and, because he's my constituent, I think. I suspect, because I can't make a good argument for this one personally, that I would have to go with whatever the consensus is, but I do think that our policy is flawed.
Very bad, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so the, we're, we don't need a motion to unsuspend the rules, so we'll move on to the motion of what we're gonna do, and I, I believe I need a motion for item, the second item, I think it would be, um, okay. So, somebody wants to make that motion?
I, Councilor Brinklow, move that the rural community of Hamel request up to eight percent of the value of the property for each proposed lot, which totals three thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and one cent to be paid for land for public purposes.
Secondary?
Councilor Hope will second.
Okay, any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded?
Nay.
Okay, we have two contrary minded and six in favor, so the motion has been passed. Okay, item D, proposed zoning pit number seven, five, zero, five, seven, four, zero, six. So, I would have to have a motion?
So, Lonnie, do you want to speak on this one, or do you have? Because I can talk on it if you want me to.
If you want to, go ahead, or I can, whatever you prefer.
No, um, go ahead.
This one is your, uh, rezoning for, uh, Mark Bernard, uh, in, on Loveford Lane. Uh, basically, you have had your, uh, public hearing of objections, uh, nobody showed up for that, uh, it went to Prac, Prac made a recommendation in favor of the rezoning. So, basically, uh, tonight you will do your first and second, uh, readings, essentially by title. If you have a motion that motions say in favor of the rezoning, and you get no secondary, it dies. If you have a motion in favor, you have a secondary, and you get a no vote, then it stops and the rezoning is dead. The same would be true if your motion was not in favor of it, and you got no secondary or you didn't get a vote. So, essentially, uh, this is all in Council's hands to, uh, do the readings and make a motion and, uh, vote upon it. I do entertain questions if you have some.
Looks like we're good, Lonnie, thank you kindly. So, I need somebody to, uh...
No.
No, sorry, I missed one, uh, Councilor Fox, did you have a question?
Question actually, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, so as I wasn't here for the public meeting, I, I cannot vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Who else wasn't here for that public meeting? So, we have three people, so we're down to five. Okay. So, I need one of the remaining five to make a motion.
Which motion is it?
Top of page two.
Top of page two?
Three.
Three. Okay, so, does anybody else wanna make a motion? Bill strongly went with, I guess we're gonna vote regardless. Okay, so then the top motion is to accept, to accept the, um...
Just wanna read the motion, the top?
Yeah, that's right, so I make sure reading the right one, that I intend to, okay.
Yep.
Okay, I Deputy Mayor Jonah, move that bylaw number thirty-three dash two thousand twenty-four, a bylaw to amend the Kingscler Planning Area Rural Plan Regulation, Community Planning Act zero-six, KNG, zero-four, one, zero-four, one, zero-zero, be given its first reading by title, or by title, sorry.
Can I have a second?
I, Council of McKenzie, second.
Okay, that's bylaw thirty-three, twenty twenty-four, a bylaw to amend the Kingscler Planning Area Rural Plan Regulation, Community Planning Act zero-six, KNG dash, zero-four, one, dash, zero, zero. Okay, so I need another motion?
No, no, discussion first.
The discussion, yes.
Gotta move things along. All right, any questions, comments? Council of McKenzie?
So, uh, just a couple of quick comments, I guess, on it, it's, uh, there was no objections to it from the people in subdivision area, we had the public meeting, um, and Prac's given the recommendation, proceed with it, fair be it to me to disagree with Prac, and nobody really complained, had a complaint about it, so I can't see why we shouldn't proceed with it, that's my own thoughts.
Okay, any other questions, comments, yes?
Um, I know that no public showed up for the meeting, which was surprising to me because I had heard concerns, so I'm not sure why folks didn't come out in expressos, but that was their prerogative. I am, I'm not for this, I don't think that, um, businesses such as this should exist in a subdivision, I happen to live there, so I may be a bit biased, um, I feel like this is setting a precedent, I feel like residential zoning has a purpose, and I don't feel that we should be putting businesses that are, you know, I guess I get given parameters, but I, I, I disagree that that can be, you know, conducive to living in a subdivision, the houses are too close, and I know that if this is approved, I feel it gives opportunity for other folks that are very similar to come and apply to do the same thing, and I, I wouldn't want that to happen. Like, I live in a subdivision, and many other residential areas are the same, they're just too close, like, I disagree with residential, I have no problem with rural, you can park your vehicle, you can put your business as per the zoning, great, but residential needs to be respected, and we created residential zones for a reason, I don't know why, um, we would vary from that, I, I disagree with changing.
Any other comments? Council of Brinklow?
I agree with Councilor De Cleve, um, that we want commercial operators in our community, uh, no question about that, uh, however, uh, we've got an abundance of rural zone area in Hanwell, where those kinds of operations can be located, a base of business, it's no problem, but, um, by my calculation, uh, we only have about six and a half percent of Hanwell is zone residential, and the people that live in those residential areas have an expectation about the quality of life, safety, and protection of their property values, and I, I do agree that we need to protect that, we owe it to these people, and furthermore, this does not, this operation does not really comply with the, uh, statements of policy and proposal, and, or the SP one and SP four, provincial statements of public interest, so I'm against this.
Okay, thank you, any other comments? Deputy Mayor Jonah?
No, I, I guess the reasons I, I am in favor of this partially is to do with the statement of public interest, um, this is something new, um, I don't really, I've, I've read it, I've, it's very vague, it's, um, I don't particularly like it in general, because that's just how I am, no, I mean, it, it says, um, it's my opinion that the, that the community should be looking into what is the statement, you know, what is in the public interest of each individual community, not just us, but everywhere, and this is a very broad, um, statement of, that I believe is being put on us, that I don't necessarily, you know, think that it should be. I mean, we should, Hanwell should be deciding what, you know, whether, whether you guys, you know, whether we agree with what, you know, um, the other councilors are saying or not, that is still our decision, and I don't think that we should be necessarily just, I don't know what, who, what interests they think this is in, to tell you the truth, I mean, whether, who determines what is a community's best interest. And the only reason that I also tend to agree with it is that we haven't had complaints, you know, at least officially, um, I understand that, yes, there is a limit to how big your business would be, I also believe that it doesn't necessarily set a precedent, some anyone else who wants to have their property rezoned has to come and go through the zoning process, and they may or may not get it, there's no guarantee that you're going to, and, um, I guess I always, I'm always in the favor of a small business that benefits the people of the community, it's environmentally better, friendlier to have people in your community coming and, you know, plowing your driveway or whatever, than having to hire someone from farther away, they have to come and do this. That's, that's my only reasoning as to why I'm supporting this.
Okay, no other questions, comments?
I know I'm not allowed to vote, but under the, the policy evaluation and the information we were given, it says the proposed contractor's yard does not adhere to the statement of public interest as is not an efficient or compatible land use for the immediate neighborhood, just to note.
Okay, any other comments? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor? Okay, motion defeated. So, is, uh, moving on to item six, public input inquiries, is there any public input inquiries tonight, I don't believe so? Okay, moving on to item seven, business arising from consent section applicable.
Oh, that's seven, right, sorry. So, Chief, it's a lot late.
No problem, we're...
You get the same money.
We'll get to the good ones, see you tomorrow.
Okay, so for item seven, uh, A's business arising from consent section applicable, amendment to bylaw nineteen, twenty nineteen, a bylaw relating to tourism accommodation levy in the rural community of Hamel, third reading by title and summary enacted, so I need a motion?
I, Councilor Brinklow, move that the amendment to bylaw nineteen, uh, two thousand nineteen, a bylaw relating to tourism accommodation levy in the rural community of Hamel, be given its third reading by title and summary and enacted.
Secondary?
Councilor Crowe's second.
Bylaw nineteen.
I know, but it hasn't been read yet, you have to read it. You have to read in summary.
So, I need somebody to read the summary?
Where's the summary? I'll have a summary. You don't have a summary?
Council of Highsler, you got the summary?
Is it one here? Sure, okay, you need it. Uh, bylaw number nineteen dash twenty nineteen, a bylaw relating to tourism accommodation levy in the rural community of Hamel, pursuant to subsection ten-two A of the Local Governance Act, S N B twenty seventeen, C eighteen, amendments thereto and regulations adopted thereunder, the Council of the Rural Community of Hamel hereby enact as follows, by summary: two, definitions, three, application of levy, four, exemptions, eight, use of funds, nine, inspection, audit, and assessment, ten, enactment, this bylaw shall come into effect on the date of enactment therefrom.
Bylaw nineteen, twenty nineteen, a bylaw related to the tourism accommodation levy in the rural community of Hamel. Thank you, Council of Highsler, uh, item B, security cameras. Pardon?
I'm about to vote.
Oh, sorry. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Thank you, motion carried. All righty, going on to...
Bylaw number nineteen dash twenty nineteen, a bylaw relating to the tourism accommodation levy in the rural community of Hamel.
Good. Item B, security cameras. So, if everybody's read their package, I need a motion on the security cameras.
Uh, aye, Council of McKenzie, move to authorize a direct to clerk, obtain quote from envy power for security cameras and monitoring fees. Aye, Council of Fox, second.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion. Motion carried, thank you. Now Chief Crouch, would you leave? You've had a long and interesting wait tonight, I'm sure, but go ahead with the power.
Not a problem. Mayor, counsel, Lonny? Everyone who chose to look over their reports for September?
Can you remember?
Any questions? I'd like to thank those that barbecued all day Saturday in the rain and the violent wind. Excellent turnout for the open house fire prevention. A lot of good comments about it, so.
We went through a pile of hot dogs.
You done right, you went through a pile of hot dogs.
Three trips.
You've done an excellent job, excellent job, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief on your report?
Motion received by Herman Ford.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, counsel. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, moving on to item eight, new business, item eight A, the strategic plan, 2025 to 2029, I need a motion, please.
Aye, Counselor Fox, moved that the rural community of Hanwell, five-year strategic plan for years 2025 to 2029 be adopted.
I, Counselor DeCleva, second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by...
I do have a comment.
Oh, well, there we go.
Counselor Holt had mentioned on page two, oh, sorry, page three, it says, "Hanwell boasts rich natural assets, including Yoho Lake, St. John River, along with the numerous trails for outdoor activities and vast forest. These features present excellent opportunities for entrepreneurs to establish outdoor experience-based businesses, and makes Hanwell an ideal location for outdoor enthusiasts who enjoy hiking, biking, and wildlife watching." The night that we had our strategic plan, did we not identify that Yoho Lake, because it is private, was not going to...
There's no consideration. It's exclusive of Yoho Lake. The reason I brought this forward to Terry is that it's beautiful, okay? But it is a lake, public lake, that is surrounded by private homes. And the way that that is worded, okay? "These features present excellent opportunities for entrepreneurs to establish outdoor experience-based businesses, which makes Hanwell an ideal location." Well, if it's a public lake surrounded by private residences, there's real no opportunity for an entrepreneur to develop that. Again, it's, it's semantics, yes, but, okay? And again, it's nothing against the people who have their properties around Yoho Lake. If they're private, it's their private land, danger can do what they want with it, et cetera. I just don't want, for lack of a better term, poke the beer somewhere with a couple of other people.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the wording, you might want to change the wording.
That's fine, of course.
I read this back in the beginning, when we first got this. And I read that statement, and I thought about it for a second because it did mention Yoho Lake. But I don't read it as, as that they are suggesting that they're gonna do anything in particular, either on the St. John River or at Yoho Lake. All I'm saying is that these features make Hanwell a nice place to live. It, it is no indication that, to me, because I read it two or three times to, you know, because it did, you know, as soon as I see it, I always think. And I don't see it that way. It says, "These features, opportunities to establish outdoor experience-based businesses make Hanwell an ideal location for outdoor enthusiasts." So I mean, all it is, is, it's a broad statement about the whole community. It's not suggesting that these people are gonna come and set up business at Yoho Lake.
Well, Susan, I was just thinking, it's just strictly rewording, and the only thing I would be thinking of is the natural assets of Hanwell. Again, it's...
You could leave it out. I mean, it, what it's...
Again, it's, it's everybody's decision.
I wasn't offended by it, but, you know.
I'm not offended by it, Susan. I'm just...
Worried about it.
I'm worried about it.
Counselor McKenzie?
It can be read both ways. I guess the same, part of the problem is that you can't have it both ways. You can't want it to be a private lake, even though technically it's public in the middle of the lake. And then say, but nobody can have access to it. Actually, we can't be in, the way it's worded here could be interpreted as, that's an asset that we will want entrepreneurs to be doing things like biking, cycling, or whatever, or say, for example, fishing or boating. But they can't, unless they own the land. So they would have to buy land to do it, and that would create a firestorm if somebody's trying to do that. I, I'm not really comfortable with that being, and I'm glad you may have noted that because, yeah, it can't be both ways. Either it's, since it can be interpreted both, both ways, it really shouldn't be in there. So either we word it so that, change the wording so that it's just considered a feature, and we have to reword, quite frankly, the rest of that paragraph to match it, or we just rip Yoho Lake out of that paragraph. That's what I think we should do, one or the other.
I mean, I don't mind it not being there, for sure. I just took it as a broad statement of the community. But if other people are seeing it a different way, that's fine, to take it out.
Okay. It could be removed.
It could easily be removed.
I would like the motion then for an amendment to remove Yoho Lake from page three of the strategic plan on top of the first paragraph.
Okay, still need a second, or?
Need a second.
So we need a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so any questions, comments on the amendment to the motion? So first, we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Okay, the motion to the, for the amendment is carried. Now we'll go back to the original motion. Any other comments or questions on the original motion? All those in favor of the original motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, counsel. Okay, item B, animal control bylaw. I need a motion.
Aye, Counselor Heisler. Moved that bylaw number 35-2024, a bylaw respecting animal control be given its first reading by title. That one?
Yep.
Aye, Counselor Fox, second.
Any comments, questions? This is, I remind counsel, this is the first reading, so we have opportunities for changes between now and the third reading. So this is just to get it, the people that are aware that we're adopting this particular, uh, control bylaw.
We missed, uh, something's confusing here.
Yeah, do we need to do B first? Like, we didn't talk about B, we just did, I just did C.
You should, don't be...
Do you want to do B first?
Yeah, we should did B first.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So let's, do we want to vote on this and then do that, or does it matter?
Well, we should do B and then vote on C, but we still have opportunities.
We have a motion on the floor, or we have a motion on the floor. So we should make a motion, I know this seems ridiculous, but procedurally, we should make a motion to postpone the motion that's being considered now until after a motion's considered for 8B.
Yes.
I would like to mo, I, Counselor McKenzie, would like to motion to move the current motion on the floor to be postponed until the discussion of section 8B. I, Counselor, hold for second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, so try it again. Aye, Counselor Heisler, moved that the rural community of Hanwell assumes responsibility for the budgeting and administration of animal control services in Hanwell, currently being administered by the Department of Environment and Local Government?
Aye, Counselor McKenzie, second.
Okay, questions, comments? Counselor McKenzie?
It is what it is, it's a service being downloaded onto us. So it's not like we have a lot of choice in it anyway. We just wanted to put that on the record in case anyone's wondering why we'd be doing this.
Yeah, but we can, you know, we can massage the bylaw to what, counsel, you know, what Hanwell desires.
Right, but the service itself, it, we have to take it out.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Now we'll go back to the previous motion.
Do you want me to read it again, so everybody's clear?
Sure, why not?
Aye, Counselor Heisler, moved that bylaw number 35-2024, a bylaw respecting animal control be giving, given its first reading by title.
Second?
Counselor Fox, second.
Any questions, comments?
I'm not gonna nitpick over procedure, and I'll let it slide, you know, it's killing me.
No other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you.
Oh. Bylaw number 35-2024, bylaw respecting animal control.
All right, item D, amendment to bylaw 16-29, bylaw establishing code of conduct for counsel, first reading by title.
So counsel, we have to change our code of conduct bylaw. The Local Governance Act has changed. They have put in new requirements and wording for our bylaw. So that's why we've got to bring that one forward.
So I, Counselor McKenzie, moved the amendment to bylaw 06-2019, a bylaw establishing a code of conduct for counsel be given its first reading by title.
Second?
Just to note, that should be 1-6. It's 1-6.
What did I say?
0-6.
Oh, sorry, my apologies, that would be 1-6-2019.
Thank you.
I, Deputy Mayor Jones, second.
Okay, any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried.
Amendment to bylaw number 1-6-2019, bylaw establishing a code of conduct for counsel.
Thank you, Counselor McKenzie. Item E, amendment to bylaw 30-2023, bylaw respecting proceedings of counsel, first reading by title.
So once again, with this one, there are a few changes. We have talked about this consent and the CIO treasurer's report and stuff maybe being taken out of that, and probably the fire department. So we're gonna have to change our procedural bylaw again.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Aye, Counselor Jones, Deputy Mayor Jones, moved the amendment of bylaw number 30-2023, a bylaw respecting the proceedings of counsel to be given its first reading by title.
Second?
Aye, Counselor McKenzie, second.
All right, any questions, comments?
Just a comment, yeah, it's only minor changes, but it still has to follow standard process, even if it's, even though we're moving one line of it, since it's a bylaw, it has to go for three readings. Just like...
Okay, any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you.
And then you've got to repeat the...
Oh, sorry. Bylaw, law, bylaw?
Amendment.
Amendment to.
Amendment to bylaw 30-2023, a bylaw respecting the proceedings of counsel.
Okay, item nine, proclamations, we don't have any. Item 10, upcoming activities, Spook Fest movie open season scared silly Friday, October the 18th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. So that sounds like a pretty interesting movie. So if any counselors are planning on attending Friday night for the movie for any extra help to their rec guys, it would be, certainly be appreciated. And it should be a good movie to watch. Item B, Spook Fest Saturday, October the 19th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. That same invitation was due to counselor to, if they have the time to attend, help out. And our remembrance day ceremony is coming up just around the corner for November 11th at 10:30. Let's hope we have good weather. All right, do need a motion to move into closed session, please.
I, Counselor Holt, moved to go into closed session.
Second?
I, Counselor DeCleva, second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor moving to closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, we are now in closed session. Motioning by the closed session?
I would like, I, Counselor McKenzie, would like to motion to come out of closed session and go back into open session.
Second?
I, Counselor Graves, second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, counsel. We have a couple of motions to go through.
Okay, I, Counselor McKenzie, moved to award the 2024 pump or tanker tender number 2024-3 to Safety Source Fire Incorporated in the amount of $1,152,509.62 plus 8ST after the upper Kingscliff Hanwell Fire Department Truck Committee has reviewed the details of the specifications and tender documents.
I, Counselor Holt, second that motion.
Questions, comments?